Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order if you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated, and Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember De Corsi.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
These are the guys that are gonna do that.
Councilmember Wells.
Excused.
Excuse me.
All right, we have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations this evening, so we will go to appointments. The first is the Auburn Tourism Board City Council to confirm the appointments to the Auburn Tourism Board for new three-year terms to expire December 31st, 2021, for Casey Bray and Edgar Vidal. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I-
Deputy Mayor.
I mean, here, just a second. Oh, my left hand is now working. I move that to approve the Auburn Tourism Board appointments.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointments to the Auburn Tourism Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Next is the Junior City Council. City Council to confirm the following appointments to the Junior City Council for new two-year term to expire August 31st, 2020, for Addison Jones and Waylon Menzia. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the approval of the two, of Addison Jones and Wayton-
Waylon.
Wayman.
Waylon. How about just you approve the recommendation?
Move to approve the Junior City Council appointments.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
I, in reading the applications for these two young folks, Addison is an 11th grader and Waylon is an 8th grader. Waylon, please stand up, show everybody who you are. All right, good. I tell ya, this, this young man's gonna go far because he's, he's an energy bunny, I'll tell ya. But anyway, they, all of the, the two, the two young, young adults that are, have applied, their ideals are about the same. They wanna improve community for the students around them, and they just want a better place for the city of Auburn, and so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointments to the Junior City Council, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Congratulations, Waylon, and thank you very much for your patience with us, and we look forward to your service to your city. All right, Board and Commission reappointments. City Council to confirm the reappointments of the following Boards and Commission members for new three-year terms expiring December 31st, 2021. Auburn Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Andy Cho; Business Improvement Area Committee of Rate Payers, Kelly Gordon; Darren Jones and Ronnie Roberts; Cemetery Board, Arnie Gally; Human Services Committee, Dana Reel and Joanne Walters; Junior City Council, Brandon Barron and Diego Esquierdo; Parks and Recreation Board, Wayne Osborne; Planning Commission, Roger Lee; Dimitri Mutzuris and Philip Stevens; Transportation Advisory Board, Jeanette Miller and Ronald Riley; and White River Valley Historical Society, Gordy Nishimoto. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you. I move for the approval of the appointments of, for these 10 Commissions.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
I served with Gordy Nishimoto on the White River Valley Historical Society, and he brings a Japanese influence to the historical society. So he's, he's a Auburn, he's, I'm sure he was born and raised in Auburn, I'm sure he went to Auburn High School, and, but he's a great guy to work with. And then, of course, on the Parks and Recreation Board, Wayne Osborne, a former council member, used to sit up here in the dais. So, and then, of course, Cemetery Board, Arnie Gally worked, he was the supervisor of the cemetery, I think, at one time. So he knows his way around, as does Ronnie Roberts from the business of the BIA. So we have a lot of good cadre that are coming back to support these Commissions and Boards. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I just have a comment that it's really nice to see that Brandon and Diego coming back, and Waylon, you're gonna have some really good leadership there, so make sure that you reach out to them and learn as much as you can from them.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the appointments to the Boards and Commissions, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have no agenda modifications, we have no public hearings, so we will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have a, actually, maybe it'd be better to go by the list and call them in order tonight. And just because your name isn't on here doesn't mean that you don't get a chance to speak, this is just to try and make sure that people get to go in the order that, that they were signed in. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is Waylon Menziah.
Hi, I thank you so much for going through my appointment, and I look forward to serving the city in the best way I can. I love this city, you guys do the best job, it's amazing. I'm so elated that I got appointed today, thank you.
Thank you, Waylon. All right, Bob Zimmerman.
Yeah, I'm Bob Zimmerman, 33029, 46th Place South in Auburn. Couple of months ago, there was a article in the paper that said that that heritage building site had to be made safe, and that kinda raised a question in my mind. What is a city criteria for having sites that need to be safe and those that are accommodated negligence? Certainly, when I got the response from the city code enforcement that the gas issue I've been raising about propane link, leak along a wall during earthquake or any other catastrophic event is a civil matter. Well, it's not a civil matter, there's no provision in state law for code enforcement for civil matters. In order for it to become a civil matter, you have to have some kind of catastrophic loss or serious injury or loss of life for it to become a civil matter, and that's a little bit late. That is not a code issue, absolutely not a code issue. The purpose of the code is to protect people's property, their lives, and their safety. Now, the kind of things that I've been getting out of the city along this wall tipping over and this gas thing is, we could not, in private industry, all the, nearly half a century that I was in construction trade, being a supervisor and a contractor, we could not tolerate those kind of, of responses, because labor and industries would shut us down. If you get so many points against you from labor and industries, they won't allow you on the job for violation, safety violations, okay? I can't believe that the city of Auburn does not have to meet the same standards that private employers have to make on construction sites. Even the, even the most common, lowest level of laborer has to understand these principles that gas, if they're on a site like that, is heavier than air and it's a serious hazard. If you got something stored on a construction site like that wall that stands there without any kind of embedded footing or foundation or safety area around it or anything to hold it up, it's that labor and industries that shut the job down. They wouldn't tolerate that kind of nonsense. But that's the kind of code enforcement we get here in the city of Auburn. Anyway, beyond that, I would just like to leave you with a quote from Martin Luther King, since we celebrated his birthday yesterday. Says, "He who accepts evil without protesting against it is really cooperating with it." And I can't think of anything that is more evil than putting people's lives at risk for what I assume is some kind of petty financial gain for the people that aren't meeting these codes and safety standards. I hope it is a petty financial issue and not malicious. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Jose Laras. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Laras.
Well, I'm a little bit nervous, this is my first time, I've been in front of you guys, thanks for giving us the opportunity to express our concerns. The reason we're here, I'm here and a couple of these persons here, we have our issues where, the place where we live right now, and we've been overcharging for water, that's a, that's the main, main problem there. I lived in Del Park for almost 11 years, and I start paying about $20 something to $30 a water, and since last year, they raised the water, I've been paid $403 every month, or most of the time it's over $400 a month, which is, I tried to, to do something with the, myself, tried to hire somebody to help me with that thing there, and seems like nobody, even I came here to the, to the city and asked questions about, see who's, who got control on that, and nobody gave me answers. So, we, I would try to do this a couple of years back, and seems like nobody, I tried to get the help for everybody, but nobody listened to me. So we get agree with the, all the tenants in there, and we processed, went to the owner's house and let him know what's going on there, and seems like they don't, they don't care about this, so this is my concern, see if you guys, I know you guys, the, the ones who got the power to change the law and stuff like that, but this is something, some, I'm a work every day, and I've been spent $400 just for the water, monthly, and nobody gave me any answers, nobody gave me any help, and this is the reason we're here, so I speak to a lot of these persons here, some, some of these people, they don't speak English, so my is not that good either, but I just try to do my best, and I hope you guys can help us with that.
I think your English is very good, sir.
All right.
So, I believe some of you have been meeting with Councilmember Trout Manuel and also with our Community Development Director, Jeff Tate.
Yes.
Okay. We can also bring our Finance Director in, who has oversight of the utilities.
Okay.
And what I mentioned to one young gentleman in the audience, what, Oscar, that we could bring a representative group in to discuss the issues and, and see what positions perhaps, Jeff, you and I haven't had a, much of a chance to, to chat about it, but maybe bring in legal and planning and finance to see if, if there is something we could do. We have numerous mobile home parks within our community, there have been some that we have written letters to the owners of the, of the park. I'm not going to tell you that we've met with great success when we have done that.
Yeah.
But we do whatever we can within our own powers to make sure that any of those legal injustices are done.
We really appreciate you guys' help, and I hope we can do something with this, because this is something I need for my family and most of the people who are here today. This is something, we've been paying the rent, we've been paying everything because we don't wanna get a biggie.
Right.
And-
So it's $400 in addition to your rent?
Yeah. Plus, also, they charge for the seawater, which is, I think in Del Park, it's not connected to the city. They still pay, I mean, there's something wrong with that, because every time they get the, get the heavy rain on it, we get everything gets floating there.
So we, our Finance Director can take a look at what the billings are for your mobile home park?
Okay.
And that's a good place for us to start on, in that regard.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Carlos Ramirez.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Carlos Ramirez.
Good night, everyone, my name is Carlos Ramirez.
Gracias por el espacio, gracias a todos ustedes.
Thank you, everyone, for having us here.
Como ya dijo antes, mi vecino y compañero este, José, estamos pasando por varios problemas.
As my neighbor and friend José said previously, we are having several issues.
Es un problema serio de agua que estamos teniendo, no solo nosotros dos, pero la mayoría de los que vivimos ahí.
Not only the two of us are having this problem with the water, but it's several of us are living in the same mobile park.
Aunado a eso, también tenemos el bloqueo de la comunicación, no tenemos una comunicación confiable con el dueño o el manager.
So besides that, we're having trouble communicating with the owner of the, of the mobile home, is, there is no way for us to talk to them directly.
Otro de los problemas que quisiera remarcar es el abuso físico, el abuso verbal, de los que hemos sido víctimas.
Other thing that I wanna point it out is that this person has been, besides verbal abuse, is physical abuse that we have received from him.
Hay personas que están a cargo que no deberían de estar ahí porque solo intimidan cuando uno va a pedir explicaciones del porqué del cobro del agua.
So there are people that are managing that should not be there, because we feel intimidated every time that we go and ask them for clarification.
Y venimos aquí porque sentimos que ese es el lugar correcto para buscar soluciones, esperamos que ustedes nos puedan ayudar en este, en este problema.
And we are here because we think that this is the place where we can look for a solution, because we think that you are the people that can help us.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Carlos, were you on here twice, or is there, is there Carla? Did you write, oh, is there two Carlos? No?
They write it twice because, for the time of the interpretation.
Ah, okay. No need to do that, we, we'll work that out, so thank you for clarifying that for me. Maria Elena Carvazé? Carvazé?
Good night, everyone.
Mi nombre es María.
My name is María.
Hemos vivido mi esposo y yo.
My husband and I have been living there.
En el parque, en el parqueadero de traílas, Laurel Wood, por 15 años.
In the mobile park, Laurel Wood, for 15 years.
Estoy aquí porque quiero platicarles los problemas.
I'm here because I wanna talk to you about the, the issues that we are going through.
Que estamos teniendo, uno de ellos es las facturas.
So one of the issues that we have and that, that I wanna address with you is the bills that we are receiving for water.
De, me llegan hasta de 200 dólares por mes.
So I have paid up to 200 dollars per month.
Suben la renta cada año y no quieren renovar contrato, mi contrato.
So they raise the, the rent every year, and they don't wanna renew my, my contract.
El único que tengo se venció en el 2006.
The only contract that I have is the one that was, it was due on 2006.
En varias ocasiones he ha hablado con los encargados.
Several times I have talked with the manage, managers.
Del parque uno, uno se llama Dave Walker.
One of them is, his name is Dave Walker.
Y el otro es José Guardado.
And the other one is José Guardado.
Y también con el dueño, Andrew Shaw.
And I also have talked with the owner of the mobile park, his name is Andrew Shaw.
Y solo me dice que va a arreglarlo, pero nunca hace nada.
And they said that they will fix it, but they have never done anything.
Hace meses fui con José Guardado a preguntarle que por qué me llegó el bill tan alto.
So, two months ago, I went to talk with José Guardado and ask him why the bill was very high.
Y me dijo que si me gustaba y que si no que me fuera, que para eso tenía marido que me pagara los biles.
So, and he, and his response was, "If you like it, otherwise, you have a husband, so you can move to another place."
Y que él no trataba con mujeres.
And he didn't, he didn't talk with women.
José Guardado es una persona.
José Guardado is a person.
Que no respeta y que es muy agresivo.
He is very disrespectful, and he treat people in a very aggressive way.
Con, hay unas, hay unos vecinos, los ha golpeado y, y hasta amenazado.
Some of the neighbors have been threatened by him and also with physical abuse.
En otra ocasión pedimos permiso para comprar un remolque.
And once, we asked permission if we can, if we can purchase the, purchase a park for, for other space.
Y Dave Walker nos dio el permiso.
Dave Walker give us a permission.
Al poco tiempo de tenerlo, nos llegó un aviso diciendo que teníamos que moverlo al espacio de atrás.
So later on, we receive, we receive a notification that they were asking us to move it to another place behind.
Y es, y que, y que teníamos que pagar extra por tenerlo.
Besides that, we need to pay extra money to have it in the backside.
El estacionamiento de atrás está lleno de, de maleantes, personas que usan droga.
So, in the, the parking lot that is behind is full of people that is, are using drugs.
Han tirado jeringas en mi yarda, adentro.
They have throw out the, the tools that they use to drug on my space, on my backyard.
Y se metieron a robar mi RV, durmiendo ahí y llevándose todo lo que había.
And besides that, they have been inside my RV, they slept there, and they robbered the things that I had there.
Queremos un trato justo.
So we wanna be treated just fairly.
Las facturas justas.
The bills fairly.
Y una vivienda segura.
In a safety home.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just so we know, the park is, it's Laurel Wood?
Same place.
Same place, it's all Laurel Wood?
Preguntando cuál es el nombre de la-
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Laurel Wood.
All right, next is Sheri Richwine.
I wanna bring to the attention that we have a small mobile home park on the south end of Auburn, that we are going to be homeless from the next 30 days. The city is gonna come in and condemn our trailers for neglecting, the owner neglecting to do any work to the homes. And so, the city's supposed to come in sometime this week and give us the condemnation of our trailers.
Can you, can you tell me, ma'am, what, which mobile home park are you at?
Pardon me?
Which mobile home park are you at?
It doesn't really have a name to it, there's only, there's about 14 mobile homes in there, and there's no park name to it, so it's privately owned, the owner does own the trailers, as well as the land, and so, he's neglected us for so many years that it's gonna be condemned them.
Jeff, are you aware of any condemnation?
Half of the park is in Pacific and half of the park is parked in Auburn.
Oh, by Cool's Cafe.
Yeah, Pacific Inspector City condemned, but some of it is in Auburn.
So that's not one that I'm familiar with, the city of Auburn going through a condemnation process yet. We have had inquiries from some folks asking how they should interact with the city Pacific on that park, and if there's people at the city of Pacific that we know that they could communicate with, I'm not sure, I saw some email communication to that effect. I would have to check with code enforcement to find out what, if anything, the city of Auburn is doing, but I haven't heard of any condemnation actions we're taking.
I hadn't heard of anything either, that's why I, I asked the name of the mobile home park, because I had not heard of any condemnation going on.
Yes, we don't know what we're doing at this point.
You have that unfortunate privilege of being in two different cities within-
Yeah.
-property, right, so that-
But we wanna bring it too, 'cause no one's gonna, no one's ever given us the official, "This is Auburn," or "This is Pacific."
Okay.
So we don't know which one we're actually at. We have an Auburn address, but for some reason, I think the legal is what's showing Pacific.
There's a, there's a little kick out there.
Right. But all of us have an Auburn address.
Right. Years ago, Cool's Cafe, part of it was in Auburn, part of it was in, so all of the seating was in Pacific, and the cash register was in Auburn. And so, Auburn was collecting the taxes, the sales tax, but all of, everything else was taking place in Pacific, so we did a little bit of a land swap, if I recall correctly, that allowed for Pacific to have all of Cool's Cafe.
Right. But still, to this day, we still have an Auburn address.
And, and the address is solely for the post office.
Right.
You could be unincorporated King County and still have an Auburn address.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily, that's, that's not the designation.
So I should be with Pacific then, at this point in time?
Well, I'm going to ask Jeff Tate, our Community Development-
Okay.
...Director, to chat with you-
Okay.
...and maybe get your contact information, so we can find out, because there's nothing that we're aware of going on from the Auburn side of things, so-
The city of Pacific is coming in this week.
Okay. So Jeff can, Jeff can help you-
Okay.
...maneuver some of that, ma'am.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else that did not get a chance to sign up that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name, and since you're not signed up, your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sochi Makovich, and I work for Washington Can, which has been working with many of these tenants, and, so I actually live in Seattle, but I do a lot of work in Auburn. Actually got in an accident on Auburn, so you guys might wanna look at A Street, it's very unsafe, but that, that's not why I'm here right now.
Your ad, I'm sorry, your address?
My address is 5054, 38th Avenue Northeast, Seattle, 98105. So the issues that some of the tenants were talking about, so as far as the overcharges for utilities, there's no transparency requirements from, for the landlord, so they're just saying you owe $400 for water, but they don't have to tell you, "Hey, this is what the actual bill from the city is." And we did manage to get a copy of the actual bill.
That's not true.
The city, the city of, the water department- The city, the city of, the water department has not told the tenants the bills, and they don't wanna work with the tenants on that. And so, I mean, so the water department's not working with the tenants, so we're not really sure what to do on that front. But even then, the landlord's telling them that they owe the money, and because the eviction process is so unforgiving, that if they don't pay that money, they're likely to be evicted. Even if it's unfair, there's really no way for the tenants to fight that. So, they're in this position of, they could, they know they're being overcharged, but they risk eviction if they don't pay. And so, the city could be forcing the landlords to be more transparent about billing. You could make it to where, I mean, we gave, I have a list of various policy changes that could be made, so where landlords can't evict for utility charges and things like that. And then, as far as the other mobile home that's getting condemned, there's no relocation assistance requirement in the, in the city. And so, what the tenants have to do is they have to sue the landlord, but that's a very cumbersome process that's gonna take a lot more time than the time they have to move out. And there's also not a really strong enforcement for maintaining these properties from the city. And so, you end up with a lot of properties that are slumlord properties. And so, the city should be taking action to ensure that renters in Auburn, both mobile home renters as well as apartment renters, have an ability to enforce their rights and aren't getting squeezed out of this place, because a lot of folks are gonna become homeless because of these actions.
And so, there is a requirement that on these mobile homes, Shelley, do you wanna...
The city passed an ordinance several years ago, and it's still on the books, and it's third-party billing. And we can get that information for you, but the landlord is legally required to post the bill that he receives from the city of Auburn, and it should show this water bill is not just water, it's sewer, storm drainage, and garbage also.
So, what should the tenants do if the city, the water department's not giving them that information, if the landlord's not posting it?
Well, if we're going to have a meeting, but in the, they go through the Planning Commission, I think is where... Yeah, they go to the Planning Commission, I think there's a fee. I'll, I'll get you the code, and it gives you the steps exactly what to do. There's like a fifty or a hundred dollar fee, and it goes to the Planning Commissioner who hears the...
So, they have to pay a hundred bucks to get the information?
That's what the code, we wanna make sure.
That might be something that should be changed, because that's just ridiculous.
Well, so, we're happy to schedule a meeting to discuss the issues. I, we can't discuss all the specifics tonight, because we don't have all of that information at hand. But when you're talking about the city condemning, this city is not condemning, so please remember that.
The point, the thing is beyond the condemnation is that the place is really substandard, right? And so, when you have a substandard property, a lot of these tenants are in the position of, they have to choose between staying in that substandard property or trying to move. But housing is so expensive that you can't move. And if the city was able to help provide relocation assistance or force the landlord to do that, they would have a chance to move.
Okay, so, your three minutes are up. I will tell you that council is taking on some tenant information at upcoming study sessions to discuss some of these things. If there are code enforcement issues at a location, all you need to do is call it into code enforcement, and code enforcement is required and will respond to all calls that are made. Now, if, if there is nothing that is against code, there is nothing that code enforcement can do, but if there are code enforcement issues, code enforcement will most assuredly enforce them.
Okay, awesome, and we would love to talk more in like another meeting about some of these issues, because a lot of people are struggling, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, look at A Street, it's a very unsafe street.
Alright, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final, final time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Alright, we will move on from public comment. Thank you to those of you who came tonight. We will, I will provide you with contact information, or if someone can give them my office number, so we can schedule time, or Jeff or Shelley, one of you, if you can provide that information to... Is it to Jose, if we give you that information, okay. And then, we will, we will get a meeting set up to discuss some of the ongoing issues there. You're welcome. Alright, we will go to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council, if any. And right now, we have two ad hoc committees. We have finance, and I believe Councilmember Decorsy, are you providing the report tonight?
Yes, I am, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Wales and I reviewed claims vouchers from 2018 that were dated January seventh, 2019, the approximate amount of one point two million dollars, and wire transfers in the amount of approximately a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. In 2018, claim vouchers dated January twenty-second, 2019, for approximately three point four million dollars, and wire transfers for approximately five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We also reviewed claims vouchers for 2019 dated January seventh, in the approximate amount of one point six five million, and wire transfers in the amount of approximately five hundred and seventy-four thousand. In 2019, claims vouchers dated January twenty-second, 2019, in the approximate amount of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and wire transfers in the approximate amount of sixteen thousand dollars. We also reviewed payroll vouchers from twenty-eight, from 2018, for the period from December thirteenth, 2018, to January second, 2019, in the amount of two point four five million. And payroll vouchers for the period from January third, 2019, to January sixteenth, 2019, in the amount of two point two two million dollars, and we recommend approval by council.
This is the fun time of the year when you get two sets to look at, isn't it? Two sets of everything. Alright, thank you very much. And we also have a seating, a council dais seating, ad hoc committee, Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Which one?
The seating?
Oh, seating. Over the, over the holidays, the seating arrangement for the dais that you see here was, we formed a committee. Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Baggett and myself, we laid out a dais seating arrangement, and it was discussed at our council study session a week ago. And the consensus was, is what you see. So, I would like to move...
No, no, we're not at that, this is just the ad hoc committee report.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay.
So, okay, so that's all of the ad hoc committee report that I have at this time.
Thank you very much. Alright, we will now move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, ma'am, I would like to move adoption of the consent agenda.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
These items are all standard, nothing out of the ordinary, and we should move these agenda items.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes, alright, we will move to unfinished business. That is the seating assignments for the city council meetings approval of the 2019 seating chart for council regular meetings, do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
I move for the adoption of the 2019 council seating arrangement as you see before us.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Decorsy.
I'll second the motion, your honor.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the adoption of the 2019 council seating chart, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes, alright, we have no new business, we will move to ordinances, Ms. City Attorney.
Ordinance number six seven one zero, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, relating to criminal offenses, adopting the crime of identity theft and amending chapter nine point six two of the Auburn City Code.
Thank you, is there a motion, Councilmember Holman?
I move for the adoption of ordinance number six seven one zero.
Thank you, is there a second? Count, Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
I second that, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman.
Yes, this, we've been having a problem in that people arrested for the crime of identity theft, but declined by King County Prosecutor's Office, then come back and have to be charged in Auburn Municipal Court, or District Court, excuse me, with the gross misdemeanor of attempted identity theft. This fixes that, so that they can be charged with the crime of identity theft, and it carries a gross misdemeanor penalty, which is the largest a city can impose.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Decorsy.
Just a real quick comment, it's interesting to know, I was watching the six o'clock news the other evening, and a neighboring city was on the news with an issue related to the King County Prosecutor not prosecuting felony crimes in this particular case in relation to property crimes. So, we're not alone in this, in this battle, and as we've said before, we just, we will, and we will continue to hopefully work closely with the county prosecutor, and of course, with our policing agency knowing that they're gonna push hard for felony convictions or felony prosecution for those that warrant it. But in this case, we have to do something in the city, and although I opposed this originally, I think we're at that point now where we need to do this and keep the fight, keep the fight going.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I also agree with Mr. Decorsy, I was gonna vote no tonight on this, but after reviewing and looking at everything, and I just hope that we follow through on what we say we're going to do, and you got my vote.
Thank you, I think the, it is the desire of the city to have the additional artillery, if you will, for lack of a better term, to be able to, to charge and hopefully get convictions on these crimes. So, it's, I don't wanna say it's better than nothing, because it's, it's almost as, almost as good as having the felony conviction with a gross misdemeanor conviction, because the time and fines are probably just about the same. Deputy Mayor Bag, or Deputy Mayor Pelosi, you had a comment?
Thank you, ma'am. In going through all of the trials and tribulations of this identity theft, the, I have to applaud the council, because they, they sat down with us individually and explained the various facets of this RCW situation. And so, they did a fine job in laying this out, so that we all were on the same page. And I was happy that we were able to get on the same page, thank you.
Thank you, any other? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number sixty-seven ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. It passes. Resolutions.
Resolution number five three nine five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, endorsing use of the 2019 Valley Regional Fire Authority Fee Schedule as adopted by the VRFA Board of Governance.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember Decorsy?
I move for the adoption of resolution five three nine five.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, ma'am, I second that. Thank you, ma'am, I second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Decorsy.
This resolution provides council the role of endorsing the 2019 fee schedule of the Valley Regional Fire Authority. Certain fees for items such as the VRFA Development Plan Reviews and VRFA Construction Inspection are collected by the city and distributed to VRFA. The 2019 fee schedule was presented to the council at last week's study session. VRFA does have the authority to establish its own service fees. And the VRFA Board of Governance, which includes Mayor Backus, Deputy Mayor Pelosi, and myself, adopted this fee schedule on November eighteenth, 2018.
Thank you, are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution number fifty-three ninety-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number five four zero one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to accept federal grant funds to be administered through the Washington State Department of Transportation.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember Decorsy.
Thank you, ma'am. Resolution five four zero one authorizes the mayor to accept federal grants to be administered through the Washington State Department of Transportation. The city applied for and was awarded federal grants in the amount of approximately five point four million dollars.
Councilmember Decorsy?
Yes.
Can you make the motion first?
I'm sorry. I was two steps ahead of myself.
You are, you are indeed, you're excited about this one.
I move to adopt resolution five four zero one.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holman.
Allow me to second that, so that my colleague can continue.
Please continue, Councilmember Decorsy.
I will take back everything I said previously and continue on. So, the city applied for and was awarded federal grants in the amount of approximately five point four million dollars for various public works projects in the city, and funding has been included in the approved city budget to meet local funding match requirements of each grant, and I apologize for being premature.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number fifty-four zero one, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes, alright, we've come to the point on the agenda for mayor and city council to report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
Thank you, ma'am, I attended a regional policy committee meeting recently, and the solid waste comprehensive plan was on our agenda. The Sound Cities Association Caucus is in favor of moving forward and urged the King County Council to do so also. We would, by getting the comprehensive plan moving forward and adopted, we would save dollars in the course of, I call, wordsmithing. The plan is essentially ninety-eight percent good to go. However, there was no action at this RPC meeting. It is planned, the King County Council is planning to vote on the comprehensive plan in their meeting in February. That's, that's generally what I have, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. I hope you had a good Martin Luther King Junior holiday. For the past seven years, I've used my council member's report near this holiday to reflect on what his legacy means to me and I hope all of us. What did you do with your extra Monday off? I'd like to think that Dr. King would be pleased that many of us enjoyed a leisurely day, day off from school or work, or even got to sleep in. Well, I didn't sleep in yesterday, because for the last eight years, it's been my honor to represent the city of Auburn at the University of Washington Tacoma's Martin Luther King Junior Unity Breakfast. Dr. King was born in January fifteenth, nineteen twenty-nine. If he had survived, he'd be ninety years old today. Tragically, he was just thirty-nine years old when he was assassinated on April fourth, nineteen sixty-eight. But let's start nearer the beginning. In nineteen fifty-five, he was a freshly ordained minister and accepted a position at the Dexter Avenue Baptist Church in Montgomery, Alabama. Rosa Parks, who we all have read about in our history books, was arrested on December fifth in nineteen fifty-five for refusing to give up her seat to a white person. Reverend King was just twenty-six years old then and had even yet to finish his doctoral thesis. The Montgomery Improvement Association organized to protest Rosa Parks arrest. Reverend King's fellow ministers in Montgomery voted to have him lead the association. It was said that he... voted to have him lead the association. It was said that he was selected because he was young and new to town. So, he had less to lose. Thus, his legacy began. For the next all-too-short thirteen years, Dr. King formed and led the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, ushering in what's come to be known as the modern American Civil Rights Movement. Dr. King visited Seattle only once, in November of nineteen sixty-one. He stayed at Seattle's Olympic Hotel. Over the course of his three days, Dr. King spoke at the University of Washington's Meany Hall, Temple de Hirsch, Garfield High School, the Eagles' Auditorium, which is now the Act Theater, which my colleague, Mr. Brown, has, or, excuse me, Mr. Baggett, has season tickets to. And Dr. King came at the invitation of the late Reverend Samuel B. McKinney of Seattle's Mount Zion Baptist Church. Reverend McKinney and Dr. King were classmates at Morehouse College. Reverend McKinney stated that Dr. King was impressed by the progressive attitude in Seattle, but his visit was not without controversy. A verbal agreement for Dr. King to speak at the First Presbyterian Church was reneged upon a few short weeks before his arrival. Various reasons were given for the late cancellation, but Reverend McKinney attributed to racism. If Dr. King were somehow able to visit Auburn today, I hope he would recognize Auburn's commitment to inclusivity. I make this assertion based on his words. In a real sense, all life is interrelated. All men are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. I can never be what I ought to be until you are what you ought to be. And you can never be what you ought to be until I am what I ought to be. This is the interrelated structure of reality. This has been a year with a lot of political rhetoric thrown around, and some of the bombast plays on our fears. Auburn is a very diverse community. Over fifty-two percent of Auburn residents are members of a protected class. In Auburn, we recognize the benefit of value and value of pluralism. We can experience a society in which members of diverse ethnic, racial, religious, gender, and age populations maintain their culture and traditions within a broader common community. We all become richer for it. To counter potential fear, I'd like to end with these words by Dr. King. Violence is immoral because it thrives on hatred rather than love. Violence is impractical because it is a descending spiral ending in destruction for all. It is immoral because it seeks to humiliate the opponent rather than win his understanding. It seeks to annihilate rather than convert. Violence ends up defeating itself. It creates bitterness in the survivors and brutality in the destroyers. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can conquer hate. God bless the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and God bless us all.
Thank you.
That'll be the last Martin Luther King speech I deliver as a city councilman.
Well, now you've made me even sadder.
I am quite happy.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman, for your eight years of dedication to Martin Luther King Junior and sharing his message of love and inclusivity. Thank you. Councilmember Brown, follow that one.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything to say except thank you to my fellow councilmember, John Holman, who obviously put a lot of thought into that. And I appreciate somebody on this council fully understanding the purpose of Martin Luther King Junior's life and what we should be thinking about moving forward. Thank you very much, fellow councilman.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Yes, thank you. I, I will not even be able to match that, but I've enjoyed every time you do share about Martin Luther King. So, thank you for sharing that. I'm just gonna share on Thursday, January seventeenth, I and Pat Bailey went to a workshop at the Joint Base Lewis and McCorr. And we heard about, this had to do with my Domestic Violence Committee. We heard a young lady, Anna Nassett, and she talked about stalking. And this young lady was in her early twenties, and she has been dealing with a perpetrator for seven years, who started out with a simple, her opening up. She was working at her art studio late at night, putting some items on her window, and all of a sudden, this gentleman stood in front of her, knocked on the door. She opened up the door, and that was one of her biggest mistakes because what followed was harassment through her webpage, her Facebook, her phone calls and everything. She called the police, had the police involved, and had him arrested several times. She moved out of the state, moved to Nebraska. Somehow or another, he found out where she lived. He was up at her work. And again, it just, just was the seven years, hearing her story about how much he has had to ordeal for seven years. Now, he has been arrested. He has a lot of mental illnesses, and they are still working on trying to keep him in jail. And he's still, somehow or another, is still stalking her through mail. So, it was interesting to hear her story. I ended up going and using the restroom before we left, and on the, on the walls in their women's restroom, they had on there a phone number that says, if you feel unsafe, and if you feel that somebody is stalking you or tracking you, sex track, are you being used as a sex trafficking person, call this number. Then, we went, Pat and I, after we left, we had lunch at a restaurant. The same thing when we went to the restroom, they had that poster on there. And I thought that was really a good idea to have a number where women can feel, women or men can feel safe to know that they could call a number at a hotline number or something like that. So, I just wanted to share that with you in case we would like to do something like that, to put a sign on our bathrooms to let women or men know that there is a place they could call and feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Decorse?
Thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, January sixteenth, Joe Welsh, transportation planner myself, attended the King County Regional Transit Committee in Seattle. And this time, due to the Seattle crunch, the Seattle, whatever they call it now, we actually decided to take the train down there. And that will be our mode of transportation from here on out. So, although we have to leave it earlier, but it was a great day. We had a great lunch and really enjoyed it. So, the train's the way to go. And we'll be doing that from now on. At the meeting, there was a motion to approve the annual report that Metro provides in relation to their Metro Strategic Plan and Service Guidelines that were accepted in two thousand eleven by the King County Council. They have revised their priorities for this coming year in relation to meeting needs of the transportation corridors in the metro areas. And the four priorities are to reduce crowding, provide service reliability, looking at the all-day and peak network investments, and to improve route productivity. So, the investments that are beginning to be made include adding about little, almost eight thousand hours of service hours, hours to address the overcrowding issues, adding almost twenty thousand service hours to improve the schedule reliability aspect, and also to look at increasing the all-day and peak network levels by over four hundred and fifty thousand hours. So, that's gonna be quite an investment that Metro's gonna make this year. So, that motion was made and adopted and passed unanimously by the committee. We also received a briefing on the twenty nineteen, two thousand, twenty, two thousand nineteen Regional Transit Committee Work Plan. And the recently passed legislation by King County Council directed the county executive to initiate a regional planning effort during two thousand nineteen to address the implementation of King County's Metro Long Range Plan and Service Guidelines as well, and to address the ongoing maintenance needs of King County's transportation infrastructure. And that was a motion that was passed late last year by the King County Council to incorporate both the Metro Connects as well as the funding levels for meeting the infrastructure needs. In December, the Sound Cities Association RTC Caucus met to review the upcoming work plan, and also to talk about the issues related to the Metro Connects and combining that with maintenance operations in relation to funding. And the, one of the members of the RTC SCA Caucus read a statement at the last meeting related to the caucus's position that will ensure communications with all groups as identified in the ordinance for maintaining openness to the separation of the roads and transit funding efforts. We believe it's imperative to have those bifurcated so we don't have overlapping issues related to meeting transit needs. And also to continue the partnership objectives with cities. The Metro Connects briefing we received after that included a report on the current services and update on increasing service hours in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and detailed information about the regional service and capital projects envisioned by Metro Connects through the two thousand twenty-five Service Network Plan. Plan for the fall of two thousand twenty is a rapid line extension for Renton, Kent, and Auburn, which will identify mobility needs, redesigning fixed route service, and new flexibility services to meet community needs. And lastly, as Councilmember Pelosi mentioned at our last council meeting, King County Metro has become a standalone division. That has been completed, and as of January first, King County Metro is now a complete standalone division, reporting directly to the county executive. And the community, and the RTC committee is going to expect some great things out of this new standalone division. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you, Your Honor. On Saturday, January twelfth, the mayor and I attended the Marshalese Cultural Event at Auburn High School. Auburn's Pat Bailey and the school district provided health and educational materials for the attendees. Two members of the Auburn Police Department were also present to support the city, and we thank them for their participation. The Marshalese Minister from the islands actually flew in just for this special occasion. And the festivities included cultural dancing by several different age groups, arts and crafts, and an abundance of great food, a fun event that was very well-attended by all. On Wednesday, January sixteenth, I attended the Tacoma Pierce County Board of Health Meeting, where the board elected a new chair, Catherine Yushka, and vice chair Derek Young. Rick Talbert, who was the former chair, had retired. And we also wanted to express many thanks to our own Pat Bailey for providing information about the City of Auburn's READY Program, which stands for Real Emergency Aid Depends on You, and provides valuable information on how to deal with behavioral health and mental health situations before first responders arrive. The Tacoma Pierce County Department of Health and Director of Health, Dr. Anthony Chan, is extremely interested in this program and is looking forward to a formal presentation to the board by the Auburn Blue Ribbon Committee for the Healthiest City two thousand twenty facilitated by our Pat Bailey. Pat also provided additional information from our Auburn Police Department and the Valley Regional Fire Authority at the request of the board. Right after the Board of Health Meeting, we, my wife Patty, better known as Bob's HOV buddy, made our way across town to the Well-Found Behavioral Health Hospital for their grand opening and ribbon cutting, along with my colleagues, Deputy Mayor Bill Pelosi, councilmembers Largo Wales and John Holman, and Pat Bailey. We were joined by Mayor Nancy and our Director of Administration Dana Hinman. The event was very well-attended by many dignitaries and elected officials, a very great event and long-incoming for the South Sound and Pierce County areas. Thank you.
Thank you. On January fifteenth, along with Mayor Ralph of Kent and Mayor Pugh of Sumner, we went down to Olympia and testified in front of the Ways and Means Committee, which is chaired by Senator Rolfes and Vice Chair Senator Frott. And we were talking about streamlined sales tax. And council, you know that we have been considered one of the loser cities, if you will, in the streamlined sales tax arena because we have a great number of warehouses in our city. And it's been eight, ten years ago that they determined, instead of point of sale to collect the, the sales tax, it's now point of purchase, which means for our warehousing, we are no longer receiving that sales tax. We have been receiving mitigation funding in the amount of close to two million dollars a year for the past several years, and that money is running out. And unfortunately, Governor Inslee's proposed budget has no funding available in it to consider or to continue the mitigation. So, Mayor's Pugh and Ralph and I were down there to ask Ways and Means Committee to please consider adding funding back into the budget, not necessarily as mitigation, but as a new, a new program to encourage those warehousing cities to maintain jobs, because those are job centers. And so, not just asking for, because we think we should, but providing reason for them to fund those cities who are the loser cities in streamlined sales tax. So, we'll be down there several more times to testify before this session is over, hopefully make some headway. Because as Mayor Ralph always points out, while they're close to four million dollars a year in mitigation, while that makes us whole at our two thousand and eight amount, it does nothing for the additional taxes that we continue to lose year after year. So, it really has made a difference to our budget over the years. And then, on the sixteenth, at the Sound Cities Association Board Meeting, I want to congratulate the new president for the year, Pacific Mayor Leanne Geyer, and vice president for the year, Mayor Dana Ralph of Kent. So, I am proud to serve with them on the board, and I believe they will both do a great job in their roles this year, and proud to have South King County represented very strongly on that board. And then, later in the day, as Councilmember Baggett said, drove to Tacoma to the Allenmore Hospital site for the Well-Found Behavioral Health Hospital ribbon cutting and dedication. That hospital has been over four years in the making between fundraising, and I was a member of the South Sound Behavioral Health Coalition that was responsible for raising over twenty million dollars in support of that hospital being built. So, very proud of the work that we were able to accomplish to bring that hospital to reality. On January seventeenth, started the day up in Bellevue at the crossroads at the children, or no, at the youth theater, Bellevue Youth Theater, where Microsoft made their, had their press conference announcing the half a billion with a B dollar investment in affordable housing in this region. That breaks down to two hundred and fifty million towards homelessness prevention, and two hundred and twenty-five million for affordable housing in the region. And I was one of nine mayors who signed on in support of this initiative because, as Governor Gregoire stated during the press conference, this is unheard of in any other community in this country. But in order for it to work, it has to be the private sector and the public sector working together. We know that the public sector does not have that money available to come close to what Microsoft has, has contributed. But the role that we play is in land use and permitting and being creative in our respective communities. And so, I look forward to the outcomes of that most generous contribution by Microsoft and how we might be able to bring some of that funding to Auburn. Initially, the funding will start for the affordable housing on the east side, where the price of housing is even greater than it is in Seattle. the price of housing is even greater than it is in Seattle. So very, very excited about what that means for our community and this entire region, and thanks to the generosity of Microsoft. And also on the nineteenth, I emceed the Miss Auburn Scholarship Program, and I want to congratulate two thousand and nineteen's Miss Auburn Outstanding Teen, Austin Douglas, and Miss Auburn Amanda Enz. And I believe they will both be attending our next council meeting for the proclamation for them to be the ambassadors for our city for the upcoming year. And Ms. City Attorney, I believe we have need for a closed session this evening?
That's correct. I can provide you with the RCW for the closed session if you would like.
Please.
RCW forty-two thirty-one four zero four subsection four B provides for a closed session.
Thank you. And there is possibility for action at the end of this closed session. So at this point, we will adjourn to closed session. We'll be back out, Wayland.
Wayland, right?
Yeah.
Congratulations on your, uh, your new position in the city, new city council.
Ah.
Are you excited?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
So they're like official in positions.
Yeah, look at that, you can get the button.
Ah, that's so cool.
Oh, yeah. Nice. What made you want to get involved?
I like serving my community and, and serving my school because I'm on, on the society and, uh, the ASB.
What's it called?
I don't know.
Ah, okay. What grade?
I'm in eighth.
That's awesome.
So I'll be at that.
Good choices.
Thank you.
Yeah, not always easy.
Uh, so, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So there's three of you on there now, right?
Uh, there's four.
Four, okay. Just gotta get five or better.
I, but I don't know if there's more because if their terms expired, but I don't know if there's more than.
Well, when I was looking on the website, it said that there was only two, and then you came on, so it's three, maybe that's bad dated.
There's, uh, Addison, uh, she just.
She's trying to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, it was a few days ago, so, yeah, there's supposed to be nine. And then nine, uh, like backup seats.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Wow. Well, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, I know Abby was thinking about it too.
Yeah. It's gonna be Paige. Do you know about the Paige program?
Uh, were you late for the Senate? That's, I'm gonna talk about it this week, this weekend, the Saturday Day.
Fantastic. Yeah, my daughter's gonna go do that.
So you can see it's on there and it's added or.
Look for the website.
It's not. It's a little question. Um, city council, city hall, and council members.
I'm a daughter.
City council, because she, uh, answering that problem is dated then.
There is one. Position.
Oh, um, where, where did you see that? Cause, um.
Senate Executive Session. Oh, um, oh, cool, that's not where I saw it.
Um, positions.
No, I saw over where the boards and the committees. It doesn't say it, yeah, over there.
Um, yeah. It's a board committee. Missions. Never separate. I can't.
Or not streaming.
I heard that they suspended it. No, she'll add two to that, so there'll be four of us.
All right, well, congratulations again. Get out of here, have a great night.
You too.
Take care, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Bye.
Bye.
Oh, everybody good?
We're in a closed session.
Oh, okay.
Is there something I can help you with?
Uh, do you have the business card, the, the council?
Their business.
The council.
I don't have their business cards down here. They, they do have posters in the nearest office.
She told me, give it to me.
Yeah, so the finance director or Jeff Tate was gonna give you her, her phone number? Did they give you that?
Oh, my, um, neighbor?
Yeah, they were gonna give it to you.
No, this is.
You can look it up on our website?
Oh.
Or I can look it up for you.
Oh.
Here, I can look it up for you.
She speaks Spanish.